So that's the other side of family don't have to do with me.
Are they the Hatfields or the McCoys?
Well, they're the good side. You know, I'm on the dark side. I was saying that like the Ford's okay. Get that straight.
Oh, we're expecting anybody else Greg?
Uh. I don't think.
Well, I've got one thirty. We want to start up gentlemen.
I'm good with it.
Okay, let's see here bear with me. Okay, it is showing we are live on YouTube. Now, Carol said that she may be late and heard anything from Brandon. So, okay. Okay, and. Look. Let's see here. We are live on YouTube, so it's one thirty. So Wayne, if you want to go ahead and begin, we're good.
I'd like to call the meeting of McCracken County Planning Commission to order. We are going to say the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Okay. I'm trying to. There we go.
All right, moving on to old business. If no one has any corrections to the minutes or comments, it'll stand as is. Uh, conditional and preliminary approval updates, Mr. Cannon.
Uh, we still have Tiana Estates that were waiting on the financing paperwork for the roads. Uh, the only other thing is High Point Pentecostal Church. We did a conditional, we approved their fellowship hall. We did a conditional approval on their canopy structure. Waiting on them to bring in a waiver to abolish that property line. The canopy was going over. The, that waiver is the first one on the agenda today. So. That, that will take care of this one. It'll be off the list next month.
All right, moving on to new business. Do we have a motion?
I move that this commission receive and file the application for the proposed subdivisions of property filed by High Point Pentecostal Church. Before and Rachel Drafton, David Williams. To Chris to Newton Holdings LLC, Kenneth L. Seaton, Archie C. Miller, Third Estate and Cecilia Newberry. Billy.
Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Call for vote please.
Commissioner Metzger. Commissioner Rankin.
Chair.
Ah. All right, presentation of plat by I guess either you or the consultants with us today.
No, I'm gonna go ahead and do it. Uh, let me, here we go. I'm gonna go ahead and pull these up. So, okay, uh. You should be seeing. The first plat up, which is for High Point Pentecostal Church out at sixty fifty-one Noble Road. You can see that there's the church that is currently there. They have two tracts of land. They're wanting to abolish the two interior lot lines to create one track of land. So we have reviewed this. Everything's in order. Uh, it's a staff's recommendation this plat be approved.
All right, if no questions, we'll move on to the drafting.
Okay. Uh. The draft and plat, this is on the corner of Cold Springs Road and, uh, Verdy Drive. There's two lots currently there. They are wanting to abolish the center property line to make one large lot. So, uh, this plat's been reviewed. Everything's acceptable. Staff's recommendation this be approved.
No questions, we'll move on to Williams.
This is out on Apperson, a little ways down from Woodville Road. They are cutting a track out of the large track one. It's going to be served by an easement coming off of lot one off of Apperson. The lot on Apperson, they're, they're actually buying this. Uh, they're gonna move their mom in behind them. Uh, so there's gonna, there's an easement on the south side of the property line to give access to that track of land. So everything's in order and it's staff's recommendation this be approved.
If no questions, we'll move on to Christian Unity Holdings.
Yeah, okay, uh, this is out on Oaks Road. It is already two parcels of land. Uh, it backs up to abandoned railroad track. And they are claiming their portion of that abandoned railroad track. The property next door, uh, Rick Tosh brought through several years back. Uh, and that neighbor's already got his portion of it. So, uh, Mr. Eubanks here is wanting to claim his portion of that abandoned railroad track. Uh, that line runs from Littleville all the way down to around the Pella Plant in Murray. Uh, they pulled the rail ties and railroad tracks. They pulled all of that up. And we can't find, nobody can find any record that the railroad is, normally if they abandon a line, they can. Record that they maintain a claim to it and no one can find where the railroad has done that in this place. It, it was a small railroad and by. All accounts, it's been out of business. No one's claimed any issue with the other property. So, uh. We, there shouldn't be any issue here. So it's our recommendation this be approved.
If no questions, we'll move on to Ken Seaton.
Okay, uh. This is out on the Bethel Church Road. They're just wanting to cut out, uh, a track for the house. Staff's recommendation this one be approved.
Moving on to the Miller Estate and Newberry.
Okay, uh. On this one, the. All the heirs to the Miller Estate of which Cecilia Newberry is one. They've agreed to. Either let her have or her buy. She's getting that what is labeled as track A one. And she's going to add that to her current property, which is track A where her house is. Uh, the rest of the property is going to end up going up for auction, but. Before the rest of the property goes up, she was going to get that addition to her property. Everything's in order and staff's recommendation this be approved.
If no questions, move on to the Vandergriff.
Okay, uh, this one here is on Lane Road. It is. Currently track ten. Mr. Vandergriff is in the process of constructing a townhouse out there and he is wanting to. Take advantage of the zero lot line provision in our ordinance. So he, that's what he's setting up there. Uh. So it, it's a long track. It, it's about one to six when you do the math on it roughly. Uh, mo- most of the rear of the property is in the flood zone. So that, that's why. The townhouse is so close to the road and there's so much property in the rear. But everything's in order and staff's recommendation this will be approved.
If no questions, do we have a second?
Uh, well, actually we need a motion first.
I move that the requested approval be given.
Do we have a sec, do we have a second? Cole, roll please.
Mr. Chairman, uh, before you do that, before you take a vote, uh, I do have, uh. A comment and, and, uh, question maybe for Mr. Cannon to answer. With respect to two of the plats, the drafting plat, which was the second one and the crisis unity holdings plat, which is the fourth plat. Uh, I had, uh. Informed Mr. Cannon that those two plats were not in compliance because of the language that's used in one of the general notes about. Whether or not the property is served by sanitary sewer or public water. There were some changes made, but, uh, it still doesn't, uh, still doesn't state accurately what needs to be stated on the plat. Our subdivision, our subdivision regulation requires that there be a notation. That, uh, the property is served by a public water supply system. Or that it's served by a public sanitary sewer system, uh, if there is service. If there is no service, then it's supposed to recite that. Uh, the drafting plat says that the property must be served by JSA and Paducah Water, but it doesn't say whether it is. And same way with number, uh, four, the crisis unity holdings plat. It says that the property must be served by Paducah Water, but it doesn't say in the note that it is served by Paducah Water. Uh, and that's the old plat that, that you got on the screen right now, Greg, that we're looking at because they changed the, the language from can be served by Paducah Water to must be served. On the updated plat that you sent me.
Yeah, so, uh, on the draft in. It, and, and in the statute or in the ordinance, you know. It doesn't give specific language. Uh, our other certificates that are required on here. We have very specific language and it's located in the ordinance. Uh, the, the purpose of this is to notify, so somebody wants to buy a piece of property and this way if it says it's not served by Paducah Water. They know that or that's water's available. They know that they're probably gonna have to dig a well. Uh, we don't have, and, and I've had the issue with this since I've been here, but. It, and I've talked to Steve Doolittle and Steve Urban about this and they've both said the same thing is that. L in the subdivision regulations isn't meant to be exact verbiage that. What they're saying is you've got to have a note here. So whether it be that water's available or. That it is served by, uh, I, cause Steve Doolittle, he, he said he didn't know where this requirement that. Either it is served or is not served came from. He said that's was never the way it, it was. Because there's a question, even on this draft and plat, there's a question. Because we called the joint sewer agency first time. They said that. There's a line out in front of this property. So under that scenario, it would say it must be served by. Or is served by. Well, talk to them again and it turns out they go, oh, wait, that's a forced main there. And. It will be very difficult to tie into and it would be very costly and we won't require. Property owners to tie into the JSA system if they build there. So, in this case. Well, is it served by the sewer agency? Uh, yeah, you have the, the capability of doing it. But it's not required. So, so to have that real hard. Rule that, you know, your only option is, is served, is not served. Isn't always accurate, cause I, I mean, it'd be great if that was the case, but. There's shades of gray and the dragon plat is, is one of them, but. This note on here. It, it's accurate. The, the lot is not currently served. If they wanted to, they wanted to spend the money. I'm sure JSA would agree to it, but JSA said they're not going to require it. And Paducah Water's there, so it can be served. It's a vacant lot. It's not current. And that, that was the surveyor's argument was that. He was not comfortable putting that on there because the lot's not currently hooked up to Paducah Water. So to say that it is served. He wasn't comfortable with, he wasn't comfortable putting his stamp on there with that.
Mr. Chairman, I disagree with that because we have consistently ever since I've been. Doing work for the McCracken County Planning Commission. We have consistently required that that notation be on the plat, that it is either served or it isn't served. And, um, right now, the, the updated plat that they provided on draft and says that it must be served by JSA and Paducah Water. And now I'm hearing that that might not be required by JSA. Well, that note's incorrect if that's the way it's going to read. It needs to say whether or not there is service at that property. That's all it has to say. It doesn't have to say that it's connected or it's not connected. And that's what the regulation requires and it says very, I mean, it says very specifically. In the, um, in the regulation itself, that there has to be a notation that the property is served by public water supply. Or and or a public sanitary sewer system. And it has always been required ever since I've been doing work for the planning commission. That every plat that comes before the planning commission contain that notation. These should be no different. If there is service to the property, it needs to be noted that there is service to the property. If there is not any service to the property, then. It, it's supposed to say that there is no service. And it, you know, it's, it's one or the other. It's not that it must be served or can be served. Or you, you know, anything like that. It, the regulation's very clear and it's been required on every.
Now, that, that, that's only been for the last. Five years that. Because I'm, Doolittle said that that was not required when he was here.
Well, I've been here.
So, I mean.
That, that's what the regulation says. That's the language of the regulation.
There's not, but, but there's not quotes around it. It doesn't say that these.
It, it says what has to be on the plaque though.
But the purpose is to make the public aware of what is there and what is not. And how, how can you say that the note on the screen? Do, doesn't accomplish that. It says the property is not served by joint sewer agency and can be served by Paducah Water. So that means you, Paducah Water is there and available and.
No, no, that's not, that's not what it means. It doesn't mean that there's Paducah Water available. It means that it can be served by Paducah Water, but it doesn't tell you that there's water service at that property. I mean, I asked very nicely that these notes be changed and I got absolutely no response. I got a stone wall. Uh, in my last recommendation that those notes be changed and, uh, you know, so this is what we're up against and. You know, it's, I mean, it has just been routinely required on every plat since I've been representing the McCracken County Planning Commission. And I believe that that's a requirement of the regulation. Well, I know it's a requirement of regulations.
I got this for.
Do I have any comment between the two commissioners?
Well. I think, you know, if there's that big of a disagreement, the two that aren't, don't have the verbiage. May need to be tabled until somebody can get together to figure out what the verbiage should be. I mean, this is. These kind of arguments on. The way that something's supposed to be written on there is hard to catch. When they're different, when they're done different each time. I do know that since when I came on. There seemed to be. More trouble early on that we tried to get everything. To where it was the same every time, so that you didn't have that work. So.
But it's not a perfect world. It, you can't have that same every single time because that's not always the situation. You, you've got some areas where you've got one of these what they call a flagpole lot. Well, the lot up front is served by sewer, but it may cost thirty thousand dollars to run the sewer line. Back to the back of that flagpole lot. Well, is sewer available? Yeah, sewer's available. Is it gonna be hooked up to the sewer? Well. Depends on JSA's gonna require it and depends on if. The, the property owner is gonna pay thirty thousand dollars to have a sewer line run. Um, uh, Joe, I understand your point. It would be wonderful if that was the way things work, but. You're in real estate. You know, it's not perfect on every single lot, you know, there. There, there's issues. There, there's, there's questions. Uh, but to say that the only option is to say is served, is not served. That, that's doing a disservice to the public and that's not what the ordinance says and that's not the intent of the ordinance.
Well, I disagree. I, I could read that regulation and I know exactly what it says. And, uh, you don't really have to read too much into what the intent is. The intent is to say whether or not there is service. For by Paducah Water or by any public water service or, uh, serviced by a public sanitary sewer system. That's what it says. That has been required on every plat that has come before this commission in the time that I have been representing this commission. I mean, you can do something different if you want to amend the subdivision regulation. It can be amended, but, uh, you know, until, until it's changed. Uh, I don't see any reason why we should change our position, um, at this point.
Darren, you have a opinion on this?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to pull it up right here and locate it on, is it where I can zoom in to it here on. On my computer and look at this. Yeah, I know it's showing right there. It looks like that, uh, we do have, I mean, there's showing a water meter there under survey. And of course, that's probably going to serve right there that, uh.
We got the surveyor on the phone. Uh. So, hey, Don, if you can hold on just a minute, uh, Darren is, is. Okay. Okay, go ahead Darren.
Well, that's basically what I was looking at right there to see, of course, on that survey right there, you can see where it is showing existing water meter. And evidently there, you know, that lot two right there. Is there a boss in that, they're bossing that property line right there.
Okay, uh, I've, I've got Don McGrew here on speaker. So, uh, he's actually the surveyor who did this. Uh, Don, I've got you on speakerphone. On the meeting, uh, say hi, let's see if, make sure everybody can hear you. Hey, Don?
Yes.
Okay, say hi, make sure everybody can hear you.
Okay. Hi.
Are y'all? I'm getting a bunch of, I'm getting feedback off of this.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I, I just, I just want to make sure they're noticing. Have a verbiage currently. I had a chance at three times.
Yeah, I'm, I've got the current. Pulled up here on the screen for drafting where it says the property is not served by McCracken Joint Sewer Agency and can be served by Paducah Water.
That was the original plat Greg.
Okay, okay, Don, thanks. The origi-. I, I, the original one I've got. Laying down on my desk downstairs. I, I don't have it up here with me. Uh.
The updated one that you sent me, uh, changed the word can to must.
Okay, uh, I, and well, I believe that that updated one said. Was back when joint sewer agency was still saying that, that they were. Available at that property would be required to hook up. The, the original one said, uh, if I'm not mistaken, that the property. Joint Sewer Agency is, and Paducah Water are available, is I believe what the original note said. Uh, I, like I said, I don't have the original with me. It's downstairs in my office.
I don't know, but this, this note's deficient. It's non-compliant.
I, I don't, I don't see that. I, I don't, I, I just do not see that.
Well, thirty-three point twelve paragraph L and it tells you why it's not compliant.
I've got L laying right here in front of me and Sonny, I'm not seeing it.
Now, if there's no other discussion, do we have a motion to deal with some of these issues here?
How, uh. Which two plats are we talking about? This one here I see on the, on the screen.
Yeah, thi- this is the draft and the other one is this. Christy Unity. Uh, and.
Just cause I can't pull them up separate on my computer.
Right, a, and here, here's the note on it, uh. And on it, it says the property shown here on is not served by McCracken Joint Sewer Agency and this property shown must be served by Paducah Water.
I'm gonna tell you, after looking at, you know, looking at this, listening to it. I think that I'd like to make a motion to retable these two. Until the verbiage is worked out. Because I, I would like to see, I know that this ain't a perfect world, but. I do believe in a, in a normal world, it's either served by, it's either available or it's not. Uh, you know, if you have a, a lot that's under an acre, that's not. Gonna be able to be served by the sewer, then you really can't. gonna be able to be served by the sewer, then you really can't approve that because it's under an acre. It doesn't have enough room to put a septic tank or septic field. So if it just says that it must be served by, for the sewer, I'm just taking this down the context. But if it just says it must be, but it's not available, then I still can't approve that.
Right, yeah, right. I- and if, I mean, if you had a situation like that coming up, my staff report would say we recommend not approving this. Matter of fact, I probably wouldn't even have that one on the agenda because I would tell the surveyor that they brought in something that was insufficient. Because that 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 clearly violates the ordinance. Uh bringing it to you would wouldn't even be
Right.
The choice. They'd actually have to take that to the Board of Adjustment. So, yeah, so like in your scenario, that that would be, you all wouldn't even see that.
But I have seen them before.
Yeah.
I mean, they have come before us.
Come before you and they've been rejected.
Right.
Yeah, because I know we had one out in Hindren that came up that we were misled on. That it supposedly was an existing lot and turned out it wasn't and it wasn't approved by the Health Department and you all rejected that. I remember that 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 one.
Yeah, after two tri- after two trips before us.
Right.
They proved before us. I really uh I'd really like to see something done on, to whether we don't have this, because this is the, I think this is our second meeting in a row where we've had this type of issue come up. Wasn't the same, but somewhat. And I don't have the regulations in front of me right now. I'm in a different office, but
And I have drafted that language uh to that could be included on these plats. Uh and it was provided to, uh at least my understanding was that it was provided to all of the consultants dealing with the appropriate sewer note to be included on the plat and same principle would apply to the uh to the uh language for the um um water service as well. And uh you know, for whatever reason, they've chosen to ignore what was drafted.
Well, we we've also had multiple surveyors tell us that they're not comfortable with it because that's their stamp. That's their livelihood on the line and some of that language, they said that they they will not put their stamp on it.
Well, they they had been and uh nobody's ever said anything to me like that, Greg, but you know, it's first
Half of the ser- half the surveyors that come through my office.
After after I prepared that note, I never got that feedback.
So, well.
And they all and and they all put the note on their on their plats.
At this particular time, I think we have a motion. Joe, if I I should you correctly, you made a motion to
I'll make a motion to table these two until I can uh get this talked about a little bit farther in.
We have a second?
Second.
Call roll, please, Mr. Cannon.
Commissioner Metzger? Commissioner Rankin? Darren? And Cheryl?
All right, do we have a motion dealing with the others? No.
I move that the request approval be given to the other plats.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Commissioner Metzger? Commissioner Rankin? Cheryl?
Moving on to the parking waivers, do I have a motion?
I move that this commission receives and file the application for parking waivers filed by Lakes of Paducah assisted living facility.
We have a second? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Metzger? Commissioner Rankin? Cheryl?
Mr. Cannon, I assume you're making the presentation?
Yes, and up on your screen now, you should see what has been turned in. It's for the Lakes of Paducah. Uh they've got their current parking area uh which has forty-eight spaces. The addition that they are wanting to build is a memory care unit. So these are people with dementia, Alzheimer's and the like. So these these are people that will not be driving, won't have a need for a car. Uh the the company that owns them, that they own several nursing homes, assisted living facilities. And the they've done their own studies to figure out how many parking spaces they need. Uh our ordinance does not specifically address assisted living facilities, so you have to kind of piecemeal it together to see what fits. Uh the best case scenario doing that uh came up with needing approximately seventy-two parking spaces. And by their study, the forty-eight that are existing, they believe will be more than sufficient to meet their needs. So we we'd actually recommend you approving this. You know, it's it's one of these things that this this is their business. They and they've got multiples, so they kind of have a pretty good feel for what they need. And if they're wanting to avoid a sea of asphalt, uh I I think that's a good thing. What why why require a bunch of parking spaces that will never be used? And that, as you can see, that is a rather large tract of land that's over nine acres. So i- it's not like they're being crowded. So i- if somebody ends up one day having to park in the grass, they're parking in their own grass. It's not like they're blocking the street or anything else. And and if they find out they need more parking, they've got the capabilities and the space to put more in. But they're they're pretty confident that these forty-eight spaces are all that they need to serve their facility.
I've been out there a couple of times. I've never seen them overcrowded. They've had plenty of parking space out there. There aren't very many cars there.
Mr. Cannon, I assume you rolled your staff report into the presentation as well?
Yeah, I did. And I'll be honest with you, there wasn't a whole lot of difference between my staff report and the parking study.
All right, just making sure we covered all the bases. Uh do we have a motion?
I move the request approval be given.
Call roll, please.
Commissioner Metzger? Commissioner Rankin? Cheryl?
I guess our next item is our bills. Do we have a motion?
I move to pay the bills distributed at Marion Livingston nineteen hundred nine hundred seven seven dollars and fifty cents.
No second?
I'll second.
Call roll, please.
Commissioner Metzger? Commissioner Rankin? Cheryl?
I guess if there's no other business before us at this particular time, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Uh look, oh, before we adjourn, let me throw one thing out. As you all know, we were originally planning on doing training tomorrow. Uh Kentucky Association of Counties and Kentucky League of Cities have not announced when or what they are going to be doing for their training um because there's so much uncertainty. I have talked with Josh Summer with the Cities Planning Department. Uh all of his planning commission and Board of Adjustment is due for their training the same as you all and our Board of Adjustment. So uh what we are proposing is that Josh and I will put together a training session. We will plan on having it at the Cherry Civic Center. He's pretty sure the city will let us use that facility for a day to do everybody's training. We do plan on waiting until after social distancing requirements are either removed or at least lessened before we do that. So uh are you all, are you all good with that? If if that's the the route we go, because that's what we're planning on.
I'm fine with it. Likewise.
Okay, good. Uh Josh and I will move forward with that and we will, we will let you know when we plan on doing it. So
If 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 possible, Greg, could you discuss possible dates with us before you meet with them? And see if we can get the majority of us, our dates are suitable to us.
Yeah, we are. He he'll and I'll work together to come up with about three or four dates. And and we'll we'll see when, because there'll be twenty people, five of you all, five Board of Adjustment members same for the city. So and we'll see what works where we can get out of those twenty where we can get the most people there. So uh it won't be easy, but we'll we'll see. And and we're not going to spring it on you and say, hey, you got three dates to pick from next week. We're we're gonna give you some time. So, but I did want to give, let you know that so you all know what is going on and what we're planning on doing. So, okay, now if you want, wish to go move to the adjournment, we're good.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All roll, please.
Commissioner Metzger? Commissioner Rankin? Cheryl?
Everyone have a safe day.
Do the same.